Alright, so let's go ahead and call into session the May ninth. Work session of the Twalton City Council, welcome everyone and thank you for attending. We have two big updates tonight. First update is on PGE fleet partner program, I believe this special be led by Matty Cheek. There you are, Manny, welcome.
Oh, sorry, um, am I supposed to go now?
You're up.
Okay, my bad.
Nick got the big smile, you're up.
Alrighty, um, okay, let me just share my screen really quick. Always fun when you've got like four things going all over the place, alright. Can everybody see the PowerPoint? Wonderful, okay. Um, hello again, my name is Maddie Cheek and I'm a management analyst in the Public Works Department. Um, I'm here today to talk about PGE's fleet partner program and what fleet electrification could look like. Um, here at the city very soon. Um, so here's an overview of what I'll talk about today. Um, I'll give a little bit of info about what the program is and what the requirements are. Um, what making the switch to electric vehicles could look like for our city's fleet. Um, some benefits and other considerations and a recommendation and then we'll open it up for questions from you all. Um, so before I dive in, I wanted to just kind of lay out with my four key takeaways that I hope everybody gets out of this bar. Um, so first and foremost, PGE pays about fifty percent of the infrastructure cost to enable us to get chargers here at the city. And second, this is a wonderful opportunity to demonstrate our commitment to climate action in our community. Um, third, making this switch is socially and ecologically prudent as at this time, we know that the climate crisis is ramping up. Um, and then lastly, switching to electric vehicles is kind of inevitable over the next couple decades. So it's something that we'll have to do regardless. Alrighty, so what is the program? Um, PGE fleet partner program is a limited time program that provides financial incentives to organizations to transition their fleets from conventional or gasoline powered vehicles. Uh, to electric vehicles. It provides money to help cover the costs of all of the items that you see in the yellow and blue boxes. Um, so all those fun components that we probably don't think a whole lot about, um, but that folks over at PGE do. Um, and it's being in or being offered in response to a bunch of folks, both business businesses and cities and counties. Um, just like us who are working on climate action. Um, we know that transportation emissions are usually about twenty-five percent of all greenhouse gas emissions that cause climate change. Um, so dealing with those emissions is really important to that fight. Uh, so in terms of program requirements. Um, if we choose to pursue the program, these are the things that the city of Twalton would be required to do. So first and foremost, we would need to pay the make ready infrastructure costs that are not covered by PGE. Um, which is about fifty percent of those costs and again, that's for all the items in the yellow and blue rectangles on the figure there. Um, second, we would need to purchase and install ten level two charging ports by twenty thirty-two. Um, that would run us about thirty-six thousand dollars and that includes rebates for one thousand dollars per charging port that are also available right now. Uh, third, we would need to use over three hundred and sixty thousand, sorry, stumbled there. Uh, with kilowatt hours of electricity for vehicle charging by twenty thirty-two. Um, and if you're ice glazed over when I said kilowatt hour, don't worry, I also feel that way. Um, basically what we need to know about this is that we've done a lot of research about meeting that requirement and how feasible that is for us and spoken with PGE. PGE at length about that and that's not a concern, um, given the vehicles we've identified. Fourth, we would need to keep chargers operational and share charging data with PGE for about ten years. Um, that part is pretty easy as well because the chargers that they require are networked or quote unquote smart chargers. Um, so basically you just kind of program what data is shared, meet those requirements and then we're hands off from there. Um, and then lastly, we would need to sign a easement for PGE own infrastructure. So that they're able to access and maintain all of those components leading up to the chargers themselves. So what would making the switch look like for us? Um, obviously we've got more than nineteen vehicles, but uh, we identified nineteen vehicles through this process that could be good candidates to switch out in the next ten years for EVs. And so that could look like uh, purchasing twelve new electric pickup trucks when their time comes around to be replaced. Um, one electric sprinter van and then six electric SUVs or sedans kind of pending what staff need them for. Um, for example, we have a Durango for public works admin right now. Um, and we've kind of all come to consensus that maybe we don't need a Durango, so we can use a Chevy Volt or something like that. Um, obviously cost is a concern for a lot of folks and so, um, I wanted to dive into that a little bit here. So while electric vehicles do still cost about ten thousand dollars more sticker price upfront. Uh, folks who own them usually enjoy a lot of savings down the line, so what we're finding is, um. Usually owners of EVs spend about sixty percent less on electricity to fuel their vehicles than they would spend on gasoline. Um, and thirty-five percent less on maintaining them and that's usually due to, um, you know, lack of just engine and like oil and filters and all that good stuff that gets kind of gummy in conventional vehicles. Alrighty, um, there's a variety of benefits of doing this program. As I've mentioned, uh, PGE covers a good chunk of the cost to get these chargers on site at all. Um, and by having them operate and maintain the infrastructure that leads up to the chargers, that's something the city's not liable for doing or. Been really thinking about, we just let them come do their thing and take it from there. We would be able to reduce our emissions, um, from city operations by forty-five to eighty-five metric tons of carbon dioxide over the next ten years. Um, which is equivalent to canceling out emissions from thirty to fifty-five average households, so it's not nothing. Um. Additionally, as I've mentioned too, uh, demonstrating the city's commitment to climate action by taking action even before we have an operational plan, which is phase two of our climate action planning. Um, would be a wonderful way to demonstrate to the community that we care about this issue and that we're willing to, um, go for it as well. And then lastly, um, this would allow us to contribute to better air and water quality in Twalton. Um, essentially more combustion equals more pollution, that's getting into both of those things, so we can cut that down a little bit. Um, alrighty, one last thing here before I wrap up. So, um, here's a few other considerations to take into account as we think through vehicle electrification. Um, first is that we have to make this change, um, in twenty nineteen, the Oregon State Senate passed a bill that requires at least ninety percent of new vehicles sold on the, on the market in Oregon. Uh, to be electric by twenty thirty-five, so our, um, supply in the next thirteen years is going to look a lot more electric and a lot less conventional. Um, and so we probably want to prepare to gear up for that. Um, second, as I think all of you know, I'm leading, um, our Twalton climate action planning process. Um, and I have read a lot of climate action plans and I will say that I have not yet seen one, at least in the US, that does not include, um, switching to EVs as a strategy to reduce carbon emissions, so. Um, I imagine that'll come out of our community climate action plan and I would be very shocked if it didn't come out of our operational climate action plan too, um, later down the line. And then lastly, um, there's a lot of money on the table right now, um. I wanted to provide a couple examples, so the Oregon Clean Fuels Program provides credits for using clean fuels like electricity for cars. Um, essentially the more clean energy you use, the more credits you get and then you're able to sell those on a market that is operated by DEQ. Um, yeah, I'll just, I won't make it more complicated there. The next one is the Oregon Clean Vehicle Rebate Program, which offers a rebate of twenty-five hundred dollars per electric vehicle purchase. Um, I believe this is something that municipalities are able to go after as well. Um, so if we start making the transition, that's something that, um, I'm, you know, more than happy and excited to support, uh, and do the work to do. Um, and then lastly, I mentioned this one earlier, um, but the PGE business EV charging rebates are one thousand dollars per charging port. Um, and you're able to both participate in this PGE funded program and apply for those as well, so you're able to offset even more of the costs there. Alrighty, that brings me to, uh, our recommendation. So we recommend that, um, city of Twalton pursue the fleet partner program to help galvanize the transition to EVs within city operations. I will stop there and open it up for questions.
Thanks Manny, uh, questions for Manny? Uh, Council President Grimes and Councilor Pratt.
Thank you and thank you, Matty, for the presentation. Um, I had a couple of questions, um, you talked about in the presentation, having to make the switch over by twenty thirty-two, I think you said? I mean realistically, we wouldn't want to wait that long, right? This would be something I would think we'd want to do much more quickly, how? Is that just the maximum horizon that PGE gave us or do you think feasibility, it would take us that long?
So, um, for the program itself, it's a ten, you have ten years to basically meet all the requirements from start to end. Um, so the twenty thirty-two is, I won't say arbitrary, but it is just specific to the PGE program. Um, so if we signed next year, it would just scoot out a little bit, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, um. This is a two-part question and the first part is probably going to sound really ignorant, but we personally don't have any electric vehicles in my family, so I don't know the answer to this, but. Um, the charging stations, would they be at operations or would they be in a couple locations? And then, I'm sorry, this is stupid, but when we lose electricity during really bad storm times. Do they have generators or something with them? Cause I'm thinking of like operations when. The weather's inclement and everything's going to heck, you know, we need our vehicles, we can't not have charging stations that work and I don't know how that works.
Right, um, I will let Clay take the generator question in just a second, um. But to answer your first question, yeah, the chargers would all be at the Twalton City Services Site. Um, I should have included a map of the site plan here, but I can certainly send that out if folks are interested in it. Essentially, it would be, um, ten spaces along, it's one hundred and eighth, right Clay? I'm not so good with maps.
That's where it is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just beyond the existing gas pump island, so at, uh, TSC, I think is what we're calling it, um, on the hundred and eighth side.
And then Clay, do you want to answer the generator portion?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll be bringing, uh, more information to you through the master plan update and next steps in June. Um, what that does is we're gonna do, have a hookup with that or we can tie into our other generator. And, uh, so that way we'll, we'll be able to have backup power.
Is there a charging station at the library?
No, there's not at this time.
Oh, okay.
Part of the charging station is infrastructure that they're doing is, it's all one piece, so it's not like they're gonna put a charger in one location and a separate one somewhere else. It's all a set piece of that, so that's, that's, that infrastructure cost, all that underground wiring, all that, that's what costs the money to operate that.
Okay, and I'm sorry, this is my last question, I promise I'm done. The money, the money that we would get from PGE, is that actual like money, money and then are people do installation or is part of the compensation that PGE? Does all the electrical work for installing the stations once we make the purchase? Just curious.
My, sorry, um, my understanding is it's more the latter where it's, they gave us the price quote for what the whole project would entail and then they deduct the amount that they're paying. Um, and then they go do the work for us and then we just pay the difference.
Council Pratt.
I'm pretty excited about this as you can imagine, but, um, and it seems to me like in general, like we're gonna, we're heading this way anyway, so why not take advantage of all these incentives, but. So, but if I'm understanding correctly, like PG is gonna put in this infrastructure, we're gonna pay for about half of it and then they own it after it's done. But if we don't do this, we might have to pay for it all and they'll own it, is that how it would work or if? Okay, so seems like this is a win-win to take advantage of all these incentives.
Other questions? Alright, so what's the desire of council, do you want to direct Manny to sue forth and start the process with PGE?
Yeah, I think that would be really interesting and then would we get sort of a more formal scale of where the expenses would fall and in what year and when we transition? And all that good stuff at that point?
Yeah, I believe we would, um, and Nick, you look like you were gonna say something.
It looked like Sherilyn was gonna unmute, so I was gonna, I didn't want to jump.
Well, I believe that we will end up coming back with a, probably an IGA or some sort of contract with PGE, um, once the, to, yeah, to formalize it. But your authority tonight would be to move forward to work with PGE on the program and then I presume we would bring something back, um, like a contract.
Yeah, no, I think this is terrific and I think, uh, Council Pratt was absolutely correct, I mean, we're moving that direction and if we can do it in partnership with PGE and. Have the benefit of them helping us defray the cost, gosh, you know, how much better does it get? Anybody else want to partner with us on anything else?
We'll keep looking.
So it looks like it's pretty much unanimous support to move forward with this? Alright, uh, nice job Manny, thank you, uh, for your presentation.
Uh, thank you all for having me and I hope everyone has a wonderful night.
You too. Alright, that brings us, uh, this brings us to item number two, a school resource officer program update led by Captain Struckmeyer, there he is. And Officer Miller, welcome.
Hey, thank you, um, I'll try to share my screen, I'm kind of low tech, so hopefully we get everything working right.
Guess the kid a penalty box, uh, Captain Struckmeyer.
Yeah, no doubt, that's a heck of a lot easier, I'll tell you. Alright, so. There, hopefully you guys are seeing, uh, our first slide.
Yep.
So I'm here tonight, um, Captain Brian Struckmeyer, I'm here with Officer Brian Miller, who's one of our school resource officers currently. And we just wanted to update you on where we're at year to date and, um, obviously we have, this is a one-year contract we have for our SRO program, uh, which is up for renewal, so. Go ahead and get started here for you. So just to recap, everybody on our, the history of the SRO program here in Twalton, the, uh, Twalton Police Department has partnered with the Tigerd Twalton School District for thirty-five years now. Um, shortly after forming a police department in nineteen eighty-seven, the first Twalton School Resource Officer was assigned. In nineteen ninety-four, um, we added a second school resource officer to the program. And then in two thousand and six, uh, we had a grant that put a third SRO, uh, into the schools. Currently, uh, we have two school resource officers. Um, both SROs are currently assigned to the high school, however, they still respond to calls for service, conduct lockdown drills, assist, assist with site, uh, security. For all the elementary schools, um, and the private charter schools within the city as well.
I'll kind of briefly go over a day in the life of an SRO, um, obviously it varies, um, but here are some of kind of few examples. Uh, we attend staff and service trainings, that's one thing that the, uh, district has really, uh. Requested something that we're highly involved with, uh, the, you know, being a part of the, uh, school community. Um, we hosted a meet and greet with, uh, Twalton High School Latinx parents. Met with immigration and refugee group leaders, met with school admins, um, and a student who had brought a knife to school. Uh, counseled students on consequences of sharing intimate images of one another, um, met with a counselor. Student and parents discussed telephonic harassment issues, um, we go into government classes and different focus classes to, uh, talk about. The juvenile justice system and search and seizure, um, you know, today, uh. I started my day, uh, going down to Hazelbrook Middle School, following up on a, uh, incident that was reported to me last week where. Um, a parent stated another student, um, had unwanted sexual contact with their student, so, um, I finished up that investigation with the school administrator. So it varies, um, we stay very, very busy and we try to stay, um, very involved, uh, in building positive relationships in the school community.
But on top of that, um, our SROs are able to work within the schools to identify students and families that benefit from our shop with the cop every year. Um, they also are the, you help us identify the families that we, we, uh, sponsor with our adoptive family program. And last winter, SROs coordinated the delivery of holiday trees for several families that were free of charge to those families as well. So that's who we lean on when we're looking for families to help out during the holidays. So what's working well with the SRO program this year? Um, so far this year, our SROs have taken over seventy-five police reports. Uh, these have ranged from found property reports, just random stuff found in the hallways of the schools, um, all the way up to, to sex abuse, um, charges. Our SROs have also made, uh, twenty-four juvenile referrals, for instance, ranging from MIP alcohol, all the way up to an assault three charge. Now, all of these, uh, reports and referrals, uh, were generated from parents, students and school faculty. None of these were the result of self-initiate, self-initiated activity by the police officers in the schools. And without SROs, these calls for service would have been handled by random dispatch patrol officers, it wouldn't be getting the same, the same officers handling these calls.
Uh, challenges for the SROs in the program, um, identifying, meeting with the various affinity groups. It's been, um, the district has requested that we, um, are involved with the different affinity groups and to be able to be intentional about that. Um, is sometimes it's tough, cause, um, it's. We're, we're basically explaining and selling our role, um, with all of these different groups within the school community, cause that was one of the things that came out of the school survey. Um, when they were deciding on whether or not they wanted to have us in the schools, um, so, you know, we're, we're constantly trying to, um. Justify, you know, um, what we do in the school or exactly what our roles are, um, but I think it's, it's been good getting involved in the different, um, groups and. The community partner groups within the school community.
So again, like I said, our, um, our SRO contract with the school district's up for renewal, the school board, uh, will be, and vote on this on May twenty-third, myself and Officer Brian Miller will be there at their meeting. The current contract covers one-half of one SRO salary during the months of September through June, um, and the only proposed contract changes. Was a slight increase just for wages. But through the ongoing conversations, the police department and the community continued, we continue to find having the SRO program, there's value in that. Um, and the continuation of this contract will ensure that the solid foundation that we've had for over thirty-five years now, that we can continue to develop and evolve in the, uh, in the coming years. So now we're open to questions, if anyone has any questions for us.
You go ahead and, uh, stop sharing.
I'll try, I'll try, man. Alright, maybe?
Questions for Captain Struckmeyer and Officer Miller? Council Reyes?
I have a question, um, when I was a kid, when I was in high school, junior high and elementary. Uh, some of the things that helped a lot as I was a, um. Trouble teenager, um, they used, they really used to do, uh, a lot of community work with us, um. So for, that kind of taught us, not always to receive, but also to give back or clean our community or. At one point, they took us to serve meals at, uh, one of the shelters in, um, in LA. So, uh, uh, from, I'm from LAPD area, so, so that was a really eye-opener for me. It changed my whole perspective of life, um, about what it means to be hungry or what it means to, to be poor, even though we were poor. There's really more than that, um, so I'm wondering, do you guys are, is the school permit, do you can do that stuff and we would do it with the, it was the, um. SROs, I don't know what they called it back then, they used to call them differently, um, actually used to use school police, so that was a term. Um, but if, they were the ones that would arrange all this stuff for us and then, um, some of the volunteers and. All of us will go like right after school and do these kinds of activities, is that something that, that is done here, I'm just curious, I'm not. Not saying you didn't do it or anything, I'm just curious if, but it's a way of giving back and I just always receiving, you know, like. Obviously, we got all the toys during Christmas, we're poor kids, I mean, you know, we got all the like attention from, you know, food baskets and all that, but it was more like, okay, you're. You're receiving, but now you give back, so are there, are there any plans to do that or is that something that? That your program facilitates?
Um, we typically haven't done, I mean, we have, we offer our, uh, summer great, uh, program for middle schoolers. Um, and sometimes, um, a component of our camp week, uh, might be a service project, um, but I like your idea. Um, of having the kids give back and be able to work with them a little bit, um, but we have not specifically done that.
No, we've, we've planted trees with, um, with the parks, um, again, that's just in our summer camp program. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of time with my two, uh, school resource officers, a lot of the stuff we used to do with the youth, we used to do, uh, no-go-tell stranger danger with the younger kids in the elementary schools, but now. To be honest, the, the two school resources we have, they're pretty busy just with the high school level and middle school level kids.
Okay, awesome, I, I, yeah, I just, it was, uh, I know that it was, um, it was good for us kids to see that. We can give back, um, by serving soup or, you know, or like picking up trash and making our, giving us pride in our, in our neighborhoods, so I was just. Curious if that's something that maybe in the future it can be talked about and, and also not all kids like hands-on projects sometimes, I mean. Especially if you're in middle school and, and junior high, I mean, well, we used to call it junior, junior high and, and high school kids were like more of that. We were all on board to do that and clean up our streets, um, so yeah, it just kept us busy, gives a whole perspective of our neighborhood, but thank you.
Yep.
Another question, that's for Saco. I'm sorry, Council Pratt.
Well, I, I keep hearing through this that, um, that, that like a lot of the, the school kids don't know your function or roles and, and you know, I went to school probably a few years before Council Reyes, but don't they have like, um. Initiate, like at the beginning of school, don't they have like an assembly where they could bring you out and explain what your role is?
Hey, we did make a, uh, we typically do attend the assembly, um, at the beginning of the school year. This year was a little bit different, uh, they kind of slow rolled it out and they had, they had us do a video, um, which they played in their, um, second period class. Um, you know, not all the kids pay attention to the, that video, you know, we encourage kids, um. We, you know, we're out in the commons a lot, passing through the hallways and we, we have an open door policy up at the high school, we try to keep, uh. Candy in our office for kids to stop in at any time and, um, chit chat and, you know, ask questions, so, um, it's, we've had a pretty successful year this year. Even though there has been, you know, a little bit of pickups with getting us back in, in the schools.
Oh yeah, and then does any communication go out to the parents to let them? Oh, yeah. And then does any communication go out to the parents to let them know your role?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. And then my other question was just about that. It sounds like there's a task force and was the purpose to help define your role and what's happening with that? It sounds like it's kind of just there.
What we can do for them, you know, and their families. So, and it's getting better and better because we're meeting a lot more people and having meet, having those meetings in person up at the high school. And I think that it, it helps with that relationship building when you're in person.
Great. Thank you.
I was going to call you anyway, but the two representatives on the committee were Council Saco and Council Hillier. So actually, Council Saco's hand first and then Council Hillier.
Yeah, thank you. So myself and Council Hillier, is what I was going to say, are on the SRO task force. And I think our next meeting is actually in two weeks, I believe. So, so we are, we are still, we are still meeting. And what I was going to say was that my son, he probably wouldn't under know that, that role because he was probably in that assembly and not paying attention possibly. And so I think that what I was going to say was exactly what Officer Miller had said is that yes, that, that communication goes out, but you know, kids aren't paying attention, parents are busy. I totally understand that. And so I really think that constant communication helps with busy parents and kids that have very short attention spans. And I also wanted to add that being part of that school resource task force has taught me so, again, being a parent who went through the entire school from kindergarten through graduation, I learned so much in that being part of that task force that I had no idea of the things that the school resource officers do. And I think they're doing so much more now, it seems like with a lot of the concerns that have been brought up through parents. And I am so impressed with all of the things that are being done with talking to affinity groups, talking to kids, talking to parents during these task force meetings. We've heard so many examples. Moment to applaud the school resource officers. And I'm, I'm very honored to be a part of that task force and hear, hear what's going on. And I, I fully support the school resource officers and, and the steps that, that, that they're taking to make the program so much more successful. So thank you for all the work that you do. It's very much appreciated.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Council Saco. That's, yeah, Officer Brian Miller and Sergeant Jeremy Rankin, they've been to all those meetings, so I'm not going to take their credit for the work they've done. They've been it's, it's crazy the amount of work they've done, hours they've put in that literally have saved the program. And like you said, they make so many connections with these kids. It's, it's amazing how many kids recognize them that are grown now and it's amazing. So, but thank you for recognizing them.
Council Hillier.
Yeah, thank you, Council Saco, for summing up the committee. I, I would echo all of Councilor Saco's comments and, and then add my own perspective. My kids also went through the school system. I have two daughters and incredible these officers have been as we look at really community-wide situations and how to create protective factors for our youth. And, and I think that goes kind of without comment too many times because there are a lot of other things that are happening. And I also would like to point out that the officers are at the basketball games, they're at the football games, they're, they're at prom, they're at homecoming, they're at all these other things interacting with the students in positive ways. Yes, there can be some negative things, but you know, sometimes great people make bad decisions and that, that is just the role of growing up and these officers do an exceptional job of how they handle things. And I just would also like to publicly say thank you for all you do and, and, and so many things, even at drug takeback days because sometimes the school resource officers are there and, and interacting with people and students that they've seen. And so I do think that the task force. I, I will admit, I have not slept after a couple of the meetings and had hives. But I do think that things are moving in such a great direction and I look forward to hearing how that contract works out.
The Hillier just said, I'm looking forward to see what the contract that we get from the school district looked like because I know we'll get to look at it also to approve it or ask for changes like we did last year. And then one of the things I heard from the the Tiger Twelton Student Union Day on Good Friday a little while ago in terms of SROs was a lot of kids were out of school for a while and when they came back, especially the younger ones had no clue what school was about because they've been, you know, been at home for a year and a half, two years. So you had basically one or two classes worth of kids or at each school at Hazelbrook and High School who never interacted with an SRO. All right. Well, thank you both for attending tonight.
All right. Yeah. Thank you for the time.
All right.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right. So that brings us up to reviewing the agenda for tonight. So tonight's pledge is led by Council Hillier tonight, I believe. All right. We have a proclamation for National Police Week proclamation. Would like to do that one. Okay. Council Reyes had her hand up first. And I'm going to write this down because short-term memory, Council Reyes proclamation. Because I've been messing these up lately. All right. We have, I think, only one item on consent. Any questions on the consent item? All right. And that brings us to, I think I got everything else. All right. That brings us to our communication roundtable and I'll start off with.
Ready for a list? Then I had a C four meeting and the only transportation thing was that Oregon Transportation Commission was asking for support for federal funding for phase two of the I-205 project, which would be adding the lane each direction. But that included the word, we're going to include tolling. So the Zoom meeting got deathly silent when that we're not doing that. And then we met with their, Clackamas County's got the Coalition of Communities of Color Research Institute doing a big research study on you know, racial equity within Clackamas County. So that was a really interesting presentation and they asked to be, I know we're in Washington County too, but they asked to be invited to things in the different cities and events. So I haven't talked to Cheryl and or anybody, but I thought maybe we can invite them to Viva Tuolotin and maybe a meeting of Tuolotinos so they could you know, see what we're doing in our community. And then I did the drug takeback event, selling Tony dogs for the police foundation and the Tomorrow People were there and what was really nice this time is Metro was there. Julie and Heidi, of course, made it a very fun event. It's always, that's it.
Council Hillier.
Thank you. Tuolotin together did have the opportunity to be part of the drug takeback day. So that, that was fun and we always appreciate being included in that and getting to hand out prevention information. I had attended, the, I've been attending the Tiger Tuolotin School District. Oh, what do we call that? Sorry, the strategic financial planning meetings. And if you would like an update, I can say there's been a lot of great discussion and great meetings and then it's linked into the school's priorities around investment and technology, investment in students and really driving down into what that strategic plan and, and budgeting is going to be. We all know how budgeting can be and bienniums and around the twentieth, they've been distributed and the committee's reviewing them. And we'll make a selection here soon in May and Ju, May or June. Well, we are in May, excuse me. The, the students will be notified of of their, if they're selected, they're selected, excuse me, and Jerry will attend the high school honors night, I believe. So pretty exciting. That's, other than things the mayor's been to, that I've been to, probably. I'll let him talk about it.
Council Saco.
I didn't have very much going on the last two weeks. It seems like my next two weeks is pretty packed, but I did take a tour of the water facility with Rachel, Terrence and Nick and I learned so much about our water and I am so, have so much more appreciation for the whole process. And so I just wanted to acknowledge their, their hard work and their day to help me better understand.
Thank you. Council Reyes.
Not much the last couple of weeks, but we, yeah, we selected the committee that we will name the names later on. And of all those people that we selected to the Equity Committee. No, not, not a lot going on, but coming up, yeah, some meetings, so. But thank you.
Council President Graves.
Nothing since our last meeting, but we have an ARB meeting coming up, I think, in about four weeks, I think, if not sooner. And then just a reminder that COVID is still alive and rampaging. We have a whole bunch of cases at my office and we all try to be wearing masks and if you don't feel well, please stay home. Don't go out in public and everybody continue to be safe and God bless us everyone, I guess.
All right. Thank you. A few things. On April twenty-seventh, I attended the Westside Economic Alliance Board Meeting. The interim new director of Westside Economic Alliance was introduced. The previous director was hired away by the Biden administration. So she's now working for them here in Tuolotin, which is kind of cool. So we discussed the Beaverton School Bond, which was endorsed to you know, say that the Westside Economic Alliance was behind the bond and asking people to vote for it. And then the introduction of the new director. On the thirtieth, Council Hillier and I were at the Grange celebrating the much delayed two-year delay. About it and the history of the Grange and how involved it's been. And the fact that the Grange is the oldest public service organization here in the city. So I very much thank them. I had a great time there. Cindy was working her butt off, getting chairs out, getting chairs down. So thanks Cindy for doing that. On the fourth, it was my delight to host a at Twelton Heritage Center, there was a televised veterans interview panel. We had four veterans who came to share their stories of what it was like for them serving in the different armed forces. So we've got quite a variety of stories. It was also on Facebook Live and it was also going to be recorded for the Veterans History Project, also for the THS, you know, archives. It'll be rerun on TBC TV. So if you see it, check it out. It's a very interesting stories that these folks had and it was my great pleasure to moderate that. A little bit. Can't believe how many kids were ready and willing to run through the water in their bathing suits. But of course, as usual, when the big moment comes, you press the button and it didn't work. It was working all the way up to it. But our crack parks maintenance folks went over to the system, figured it out, got it fixed and the kids were happy again. Just a little bit delayed on getting the water splashing out of the valves, but it was a good time. And yeah, thanks to the parks folks who are putting that together. On Friday, late Friday or early Friday, I don't know if you guys heard about this. The locally preferred alternative for the interstate bridge project was released. And they're looking at four lanes on each side along with public transit. So you've got the folks. No one's super happy because you've got the folks who want more lanes aren't happy. And you have the folks who want less lanes not happy, but this is the one they've settled on. There's no formal design yet. But they're going to go forward looking for approval throughout the region for four lanes on each side plus and gives input, but doesn't vote. They'd like the option to have a senior person representative on each of our committees who is non-voting, but can provide the input from someone in our senior community that the committee might not be aware of. Especially when it comes to ARB, the Planning Commission, maybe at the library, you know, the different committees we have. They want us to think about it. So I told them I'd bring it up tonight and we can circle back on that, but noodle it and see what you think about having, you know, one of our seniors who doesn't vote, but has, you know, the ability to give advice and input to some of the decisions that are made for the city. Uh, with that, that's all I have. Anything else, uh, for work session? We're done a little early. All right. So it's about twenty-three after six. We'll start back up at seven o'clock. So I'll go ahead and close work session and we'll start our regular council meeting at seven PM. See you in a little bit.